Flag please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Kelly's going to be a little late, so she asked me to fill in for her. We have some suspension of the rules. I'd like to bring the chorus from the high school out to entertain us a little bit. And I'm going to put it in right now. Instead of doing the rest of the agenda, we'll ask them to come in. And the first song they're going to be singing today is "I Can't Help Falling in Love With You." And the leader, Cole, is here to present us with these talented students from Chelsea High School. Whenever you're ready.
There are a lot of them.
I guess so. That's awesome.
Freedom, 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 freedom. I'm on the road, turn back now, freedom come for me. I'm on the road, won't turn back now, freedom come for me. Will freedom straight make it to me somehow, freedom come for me. Oh, freedom, 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 freedom. I'm on the road, won't turn back now, freedom come for me. I wanna go to freedom's door. Freedom come for me. The only place I'll run to. Freedom come for me. We've come to find we've got our head on the block. We've heard too much, no, don't give up now. We need to run just to let it out, freedom come for me. Oh, freedom, 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 freedom. I'm on the road, won't turn back now, freedom come for me. Oh, freedom, 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 freedom. Oh, freedom's door. Freedom come for me. Freedom come for me.
Very much. We're very proud of your students from the high school, and we're very proud of Cole. You do have a fantastic job with the students at the Chelsea High School Chorus. Thank you so much for coming. I'm going to wait a couple of minutes before the students leave, so they can go home and do their homework. Okay, we'll continue with the meeting. I need the school committee meeting's approval for the meeting on January 2nd, 2020. Could I have a... Ms. Viswells, approves it. Could I have a second, please? Thank you, Henry. Mr. Wilson seconded. Okay, the next presentation of the new website launch, a sneak preview, I guess, we're going to have.
Good evening, members of the school committee. My name's Monica Lamboy. I'm the Executive Director of Administration and Finance. And I'm really pleased to be able to give you a sneak peek of the website. It is a project that we've been working on for about eight or nine months now. It's 100% staff effort. We haven't had any outside assistance. There's been a tremendous team of people working on it. I can't name all of the people that have been involved. But special thanks to Lois Rowe, Rich Pilcher, Diego Reyes, and Laura Hubert for all the work that they've done. We're right now looking at the homepage, the first glimpse of what you would get when entering the new Chelsea website. At the top is a dark gray bar. I'll walk through that. That's a navigation panel. But even a little further higher, on the top right, is that something says District Home, and something says Choose Your School. That's where people will have the navigation ability to go and look at all of the school pages, of which there are many, or whether you want to look at the district-wide pages. So, ability to toggle back and forth between the district-wide pages and the school pages. And then, this page we happen to be looking at is the district-wide page. So, this is the landing page. I'm going to try to go down without losing connection. The Wi-Fi's a little slow. So, on the homepage, when the people first come, we have our very important statement that says Chelsea Public Schools is a gateway system that welcomes and educates all student students and families. We have on the left-hand side here District News and Announcements. Many of these happen to be from last school year, but anything that's new, that's coming up, that the superintendent might want to let people know about some test scores, or various things that are going on, that will be there. On the right-hand side here, where it says Upcoming Events, will be exactly that. Various events that are happening at the schools, or something that might be happening in City Hall related to the schools, and the flyers and various things will be able to be there right away. You also see on the right-hand side of this screen Twitter. So, the Twitter feed for the district is going to be on every school page and every district-wide page. You also have below that is the Facebook feed. So, those are all being fed centrally, and as soon as we send out a Facebook post, it's going to go directly to the website here forward, without any additional sort of time or intervention needed. We have About Chelsea Public Schools. The big pictures are so beautiful, but they also take up a lot of memory on this little laptop here. So, this is the About page. It talks about the Chelsea vision. It has a number of annual reports that we have. It has our plans going forward. They're all going to be on there. District Leadership is our superintendent's page, and our very important school committee pages are under District Leadership. We will have all of your agendas posted. We already have the minutes for a number of years already available on the website, just for anybody to be able to be interested in it. There's our superintendent. We have the bios of all the school committee members are up, and as we get more photos and more information, we'll be adding those. Academics is our curriculum and instruction, where we have, again, information about our scores, our academic program. We'll be adding to that considerably as time goes by. Under Departments, one of the things we tried to do was to organize how people perceive us, as opposed to necessarily how we organize ourselves internally. So, our departments are Buildings and Grounds, Administration and Finance, Food Services, Human Resources, Parent Information Center, and Technology. Our services are other types of areas that directly face to students. Real happy to show you the Food Service page. We have a really phenomenal food program. So, we will have lots of photos coming up of the different offerings. Our menus will be available every month in a timely way, because we have a new way that we're uploading that information. So, we know that's been probably a source of frustration for a number of parents. And all of the various healthy Chelsea effort, the wellness policy, all of that is under the Food Service Department. Under Student Services... I'd really like to highlight, we'll have here is our English Language Learners, our Special Education Program, what the various terms are, how one enters in the program, who you would contact, if you want to have your child evaluated for various sorts of things. It's going to be in there. The agendas for our CPAC and the agendas for our LPAC, so for folks who want to participate but may not know when the meeting dates are going to be, that will all be in there. We have a substantial amount of information under Health Services, including who all the nurses are, but information for asthmatics, on children with diabetes, various types of screenings that students have to have either upon entry into the district or at different grade levels. All of that information is available on the Health Services page. This happens to be the ELL page. Let's go look at the school real quick. Yeah, here's Health Services. So, there's an entire series of resources for parents. And we were going to continue to keep adding more flyers, more information, websites. So, one of the improvements is that we are going to be able to just save a file in a folder, and that folder is going to automatically upload to the website. So, we're not going to have to go through a single point of contact, the way we have been with the current website. As you can imagine, all of the various departments and the various schools trying to get things uploaded, it's been a lot of wait. So, things where we know we're going to have routine updates, the menus, these health resources, they're just going to be able to save them in one place. It's automatically going to show up on the website for people to view, in pretty much real time after that. Choosing our schools. So, the schools are alphabetical but by grade band, so starting with the Early Learning Center. Then we have our four elementary schools, our middle schools, et cetera. So, I want to show you the Berkowitz real quickly. So, all the schools are formatted in the same way, but they have the information that's unique to that school. So, for parents that are bringing their child up from the Early Learning Center and want to learn about the four elementary schools, they'll find the information in the same place, but it's going to be unique to the school. So, always on the top left, we're going to have the logo for that school. Then the contact information, the address, principals, the start and end of the day, whether the school is a uniform school or not, and really important, what's the name of the mascot for the school, because that's how I would probably decide. And then, moving down, it talks about the school itself. And for all of our schools, we have these three bars at the bottom. Our academic focus, and underneath there, it talks about various, perhaps, priorities or philosophic underpinnings for the academic program there. Special education programs that'll link back to that page. We have information on the art, music, and after-school programs that are available at that school, so parents know what the offerings are, how frequently they have them. And then, what's new this year, what's new this school year. So, all of the principals decided what they wanted to highlight that's new in their program this year. So, that was all written by the principals. Moving up, we have... There's a different series of headers, a different series of topics for each of the schools. Again, they're all the same, but they're different than the district-wide page. We have a message from every principal with their photo, so that you'll always know who your principal is, but also a little bit about their academic background, how they happened to get to Chelsea Public Schools, other sorts of what they wanted to convey to the community about themselves. And a wonderful photo. We've had great privilege to get some great photos for our website. Under Resources, there's information about after-school programs. It'll go directly to the lunch menus, the student welcome packet. For Family Engagement, I know it's hard for you to see it, we have a page for the parent liaison for each school. The contact information for the parent liaison, and also a little bit about that person, so that families who want to remember who they should reach out to, that'll be easy to get. And then, on the other page under Family Engagement, it's How Do You Get Involved? If you want to volunteer, how do you do that? We'll also connect back to the CPAC and the LPAC. So, you might be looking at the Kelly School, but now you want to think about how could I participate at a district level? That information will be there for moving on. Each school will have a photo gallery of photos they want to upload during the year. Right now, it doesn't have a lot. And then, we have a page here called Transition to Middle School, because we know it's become an important issue for our fourth-grade parents, thinking about, okay, what's the next school for my students? So, this page is specifically about the offerings at the middle school level, what the different schools have, how many students, and it links to their pages. Extracurricular class offerings, services, and a little bit of information about the different buildings, where they're located, and some photos to have people understand really how great are all three of our middle schools are. And then, if you bear with me, I'll take us to Chelsea High School. So, Chelsea High School has the most content of all of our schools, the most pages, because it has the most differentiation and programs. There is an extensive page about academics, which highlights our early college program, links to a full page about early college. It talks about our career pathways, links to a full page about the career pathways. We have information about saving for college, how to get information about attending college, a whole series of information up here for Chelsea High School that is really geared toward, you know, what are we going to study academically now, and how's that going to prepare us for the future? So, with that, I just want to give you this quick snapshot. We will be quietly going live over the weekend with a larger sort of splash, probably in the next week or so, just to make sure. We have a couple of days to iron out any kinks that there might be. So, thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Does anybody have any questions about the website? Roberto?
I'm curious about the, is it available in Spanish? How much of it will be available in Spanish? How is that working?
So, the site, it has a translation function built in. We've tested it a number of times. We also, with everything that we wrote, we tried to use plain language, which is the most direct, simplest way to say everything, to facilitate the translation. So, I'm hopeful that is something I'd like to, you know, sort of test out. All of our event flyers are translated, so you'll see for events, some are available, English, Spanish, all of them, and some in Portuguese, but you'll be able to click on the flyer for the language that you're interested in.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Just want to congratulate you on putting a lot of effort and working on this website. Seems to have a lot of our resources available for our parents and for our students. So, I'm looking forward for the launch of the resources that you have there. And if you need any support, let us know. I know we're still fanning with some bios, so we are going to be sending those your way.
And yeah, this is amazing. I was saying it looks like Website 4.0. Like, anything I could think of seems like it's up there, so it's great. So, thank you all for your work. I was wondering, under the Community Engagement tab that you talked about, if the school site councils are also added there, or is that something that's being considered in the individual school pages for volunteers or...
Each individual school page has, underneath the parent liaison, has a tab for parent involvement. The dates and times of the school site councils are embedded in the page, and then, as we get agendas and minutes, they are going to be posted as well.
Amazing. Thank you.
Any more questions? Well, thank you so much, Monica. That was a lot of information, and it's going to be great when it's all up and running, and I appreciate all the work you put into it. You're welcome. So, we'll continue to go on with the agenda, but before we do, I'd like to recognize Mr. Leo Robinson, our delegate from the City Council being here. Thank you very much for coming. And we have a new member of the student council. Want to tell us a little bit about yourself and your name, honey?
My name is Jasmine Javel. I'm a senior at Chelsea High. I've been in Chelsea my whole life. Been to the elementary, middle school, so basically, my whole life I've been in Chelsea. That's pretty much it.
Well, welcome aboard. And we're here to help you students, and you're here to help us. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the public comments. If anybody wants to make public comments, please come up to the podium. You have three minutes to talk, and anyone who wants to talk, come up now.
I'm supposed to state my name and...
Name and address, please.
My name is Andrew Millmore. I'm a teacher at the high school for the past 15 years. I live in Malden. I just wanted to talk a little bit specifically about our L students and pass along some information from some other teachers at the high school who have been engaged in this budget process, for example, by attending the open houses but weren't able to be here tonight. So, first, I have a short statement here from Sarah Harrington, who is the ELL instructional coach at the high school. If you were at the opening day convocation, you might remember her winning that special award as well for her outstanding work. And she wanted to bring this to your attention. During my nine years as a teacher at CHS, she says, "I've watched ELL classes grow exponentially in size, to the point where classes with English I students, our newcomers, have 30 students in each class at the high school presently." Speaking from firsthand experience, my L students who had smaller class sizes were able to progress in their abilities and content skill faster. Often in these classes of 30, it feels like there are three different classes in one, and all with very different needs. For example, there are multiple students with interrupted education, some with undiagnosed special education needs, and as well as students who have been to school or in their country already through eighth or ninth grade. With these different needs, plus the added trauma that many students have recently had of coming into the U.S., possibly living with new members of their family, it is detrimental to their education to have classes of 30 students with only one teacher. To best serve these students, there should either be co-taught classes for English I students and/or lower class sizes in order to properly educate and support them. So, with that in mind, that a lot of our, some of it is unpredictable, because we never know who's going to show up in the span of a year and so forth, but with the E1 class sizes consistently in the high 20s and up to 30, this is not a blip. It's something that's happening a lot. And I just want to finish with some information from another nearby urban district who also serves a lot of Ls, that would be Boston, and their policy on class sizes. In bilingual ESL and SEI classes, this is in the Boston Public Schools, there can be no more than 20 students at any grade level, or 25 with a paraprofessional. In SLIF classes, that's students with limited and interrupted formal education, which is also a major population here. In SLIF classes, they are capped at 15 students. This is Boston. I know they have a bigger pool of resources than we do, but they also have a lot of demands on them. I don't think it's easy for them to put together a program like this, but they've committed to it. It's something for us to think about. That's pretty much all I have, and I don't want to take too much time from the other speakers, but I want to thank you for your openness in this process, and hope that you continue to listen to the community and the educators as you form the budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and your address if you're going to speak. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name's Kathryn Anderson. I'm the Vice President of the Chelsea Teachers Union, and I live at 28 Warren Ave in Somerville, Massachusetts. I'm here tonight just to talk a little bit about the budget process that we're still going through as a community. We've reached out to the teachers through a contract survey, and that included questions around budgeting. And about 250 responses, we heard overwhelmingly that the educators at our schools want to focus on smaller class sizes, more special education... on smaller class sizes, more special education teachers, more ELL teachers, and smaller caseloads for our student support, so people who are speech and language pathologists, school psychologists, occupational therapists. Additionally, we are hoping, like Andrew just mentioned, to see a SLIF program recreated. We lost that due to budget cuts at the middle school level two years ago, and we've seen students who have had interrupted education have difficulty transitioning back into the educational atmosphere, and we want to have the specialized educational space where those students can thrive. In line with the budget process, we're also asking for a more detailed budget so that we can comment on specific things. In the past, we've received a budget that looks essentially like this is how much money this school is getting, this is how much money that school is getting. We want a more detailed budget so we can see and provide more detailed feedback around where we would like to see things shift if we happen to disagree with what the superintendent's office proposes. We also are hoping for a continued and more open community process. We really appreciate the community forums that the superintendent's office has been putting on throughout the school year. However, in the last two community forums, I believe we've had about fifteen parents able to participate, and in a school district of our size, that's just not fully representing what the community should be giving input on in terms of their students' learning conditions. So we'd like to see the superintendent and the school district put out an alternative option for providing feedback. We know how busy our families are and how difficult it can be to show up at a meeting. We'd really like to see some creative options coming out from the school committee and central office, whether that's a survey, whether that's postcards, whether that's canvassing, anything that we can do in order to get feedback from more parents around what they would like to see for their students. Thank you for hearing from me.
Hi, my name is Lisandra Molina, and I live in sixteen U Street, Chelsea, Mass. And I want to first thank you, say thanks to the council members for helping Chelsea High students get graduation outside last year and for the years to come. But recently, some parents have been informed that the, this year's graduation has been moved to Monday, June eighth, at six P.M. It was actually in a class of twenty-twenty parent meeting that was organized by me, some class officers, and advisors, where we disclosed this date, and the parents were just saddened. I think they were upset at the fact that it's on a Monday when many parents have to work long hours, and those hours are also the hours that graduation's supposed to take place on. And even if they ask for the day off, it's not guaranteed for them, and I think for the parents to have the slightest doubt that they won't be able to see their kids receive the diploma saddens them and it frustrates them. I think the fact that they felt like they had no voice in this decision-making just really frustrated them even more. And it's not just parents. I think the fact that graduates didn't have a voice in this decision either is also frustrating. Graduation at Chelsea High is a community celebration, and so I think more voices should be heard when it comes to decisions like that. I personally believe that moving graduation to six P.M. was a great choice, especially because last year, graduation was during the afternoon, and it left like a lot of us burnt because of the sun and the heat. But moving it to a Monday doesn't change that problem. I think it was just the timing that should have been changed, not the day, because as I recall, like, I don't think there was any complaints about having it on a Sunday. And it's also tradition at Chelsea High to have it on a Sunday, so I think removing that tradition is just unnecessary. But I think by having the city, if the city did have a valid reason for moving it on a Monday, I think they should disclose that to the graduates and to the parents, and that's it. Thank you for your time.
Do I have to say where I live? Oh, 149 Trailers Street, Chelsea, Mass. I came today specifically to talk about the Guidance Council Department. I don't know how much money is going to be put towards them this year for this new budget, but personally, I would like to advocate for more money for the Council Department because in my time at CHS, I actually had four different counselors. Each year, I had a different counselor, and it was, for me, like, it was a little difficult because I didn't get the time to connect with them, and I feel like a reason they left was because of the way they were set up, because I see that for my counselor specifically, I think she has like a hundred-and-thirty-something students that she has to worry about, and that's like a lot of students. And especially the English Language Department's Guidance Counselor, she has two-hundred-and-thirty-plus students that she has to get through, which is a lot of, a lot of people. If you put that in perspective, that means that you see over, you know, seven kids per day once a month. That's insane. Personally, I didn't think I was going to apply to college this year because I really didn't know how to apply to college. I didn't know who to talk to about it, and people told me to go talk to my Guidance Counselor. But at first, I thought that she was too busy because, you know, they always say they have a lot of work to do and they have a lot of caseloads, and, you know, I almost missed out on applying to college, and I also set my bar really low. I didn't know where I wanted to go. I thought I was in the bunker hill, after, you know, I spent so much time working on my grades, doing extracurriculars. And I see that they were such a big help when I actually went to go ask them, like, hey, what's FAFSA? Hey, what's the Common App? What's the CSS Profile? What colleges do you think I should apply to if I have this GPA? What colleges do you think I should do? And they're really helpful because, you know, a lot of the times, like, teachers are very difficult to, like, come up to and talk to because they, like, a lot of them are very supportive at CHS, and I'm glad to say I have many teachers here that have been my teachers, and I am very blessed to have had them in my life teach me and, you know, not only teach me as a learner but as a person to grow. But the, for me, my counselor was very important last year. She helped me through a very difficult time where I felt like I didn't have anybody to talk to. She was very supportive and also told me, you know, to strive for greatness and to strive to look for, like, big goals. I mean, the Guidance Department is very limited in the sense that, like, they're, they want to help, but they don't have the means to help everybody, and a lot of people don't know, you know, who their Guidance Counselor is or how they can meet with them, and it's partly because they have so many people that they can't really get to everybody. So that's one thing. Also, quickly, I don't want to take it away from anybody else, but the Language Department, I was really saddened to hear that last year, they wanted to get rid of the French Department, and that was very frustrating because I was taking French II at the time, and I wanted to take French III and French IV, and I didn't want that taken away from me, and I know a lot of students at CHS do enjoy the French Department, they enjoy learning with Mr. Rockano and Ms. Gilbert, because, you know, they make, they make learning a foreign language fun, and having only Spanish is, you know, Spanish is a great foreign language, and I appreciate everything, but a lot of students already speak Spanish, and, you know, they're looking for something different. They're looking for maybe like a different language. French was fun. Latin was fun until it was cut, which was frustrating for a lot of students, and, you know, Portuguese, Italian, other than anything else. Like, people, like, we want a variety. We want something that will get us interested because school is about learning, but, you know, it's also fun when you're learning about something that you want to learn because as learners, you know, you continue, you grow, and, you know, you only learn as long as you enjoy it. And when you enjoy something, you love to learn. So yeah, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Brandon Garcia, and I live on 461 Crescent Avenue. First, I just want to thank you, I want to thank you for holding this meeting and hearing our opinions. We are all truly very grateful, and thank you. First of all, I just hope with this new budget we're getting, I want to emphasize the importance of health classes at CHS, because I know as of currently, a lot of students are taking them on Odysseyware, and as much as that teaches them, that's not really a very special or, not special. It's awkward because it's health, so that's why I'm, yeah. Essentially, I just want to stress that we should be able to be taught by a teacher and learn all the content, including, you know, just general, like, exercise, sexual health, especially with the inclusion of sexual health for the LGBTQ+ youth within Chelsea, because they're, we cannot deny they don't exist, they do need info, because we don't want any diseases, of course. Moving on, I would like to stress also, I hope the money used will be focused on the middle schools. I know as a Chelsea High student, a lot of the time where I saw students falter was in middle school. As in middle school, you can't get held back. I know there was a bunch of times where students wouldn't really care or wouldn't really try in middle school because what does it matter if they get all Fs? They're still moving to sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. Doesn't matter to them, they're still moving up. And that was a start where me and my peers started noticing that the, that the work people started doing really started declining, and their work ethic started declining as well, which when they go to high school at CHS, really puts them really far behind, resulting in lower test scores and just not them, not them being where they should be. And I hope you guys use that money for incentives. I know recently, like, you guys put sports in the middle schools for them to use, and hopefully, clubs will be implemented as well, like, I don't know, drama, technology clubs, culinary clubs, with rules that, oh, you have to have, you know, like, only one F, or you can't have, like, these bad grades if you want to participate in these clubs, because that will get students to start working harder and will start getting them to get better work ethic and start getting used to higher workloads, which will really prepare them for high school, and I think will definitely leave a mark on the problem that Chelsea High students not being exactly where they need to be. So yeah.
Richard Flores, 124 Chestnut, Chelsea, Mass. And I came here to talk about the topic of foreign language, just as Joseph clearly touched on. And as a former French II student, last year, we found out the news about the French Department with the possibility of getting, you know, cut, and I was devastated, you know, as, as well as Joseph, I always wanted to take French II and French III in the next few years. And I don't know how much, you know, the budget's going to go towards the Foreign Language Department, but I do wish that more of the, like, languages are added, like, diversity into our school. I do know that in the past years, Chelsea High did offer German, Latin, French, and Spanish, and then German was cut, and then devastated most of people, and then Latin was cut about three years ago, which devastated the curriculum of many students, which had to take another foreign language, which for them was the option of French II, or French overall. And having, like, more of a language that could open the diversity and the culture of other countries, such as like the most spoken languages, such as the Arabic, Mandarin, Portuguese, such languages can open up the culture for many other countries and, you know, learning about the environment and helping them in their life. And yeah, thank you.
Amy Jimenez, 450 Eastern Avenue. I just wanted to agree with Richard and Joseph about the foreign language. When, last year I heard that the French Department was possibly going to get cut out, I had a bit of a dilemma because I had only taken French I at the time, and so the graduation requirement is to take two years of a language. So I thought, okay, so if I don't take French as a junior, then I'll have to restart and take Spanish I, and then I won't be able to take any classes that I need to take for senior year. So I like to this, now that I actually do have the, the chance to take the classes that I want to take in senior year. I believe that French and Spanish are limited options. I'd like to see a bit more of like what Richard said, like Mandarin or Arabic, because I know that the schools in Boston, they do take Mandarin classes or Japanese classes, and I'd like to see that type of culture and knowledge be implemented in Chelsea High School as well, because I think we need that kind of exposure sometimes. And yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
My name is Aaliyah Cologne. I live on 83 Spencer Ave in Chelsea, Mass. But basically, I've played softball since the age of ten, and I know a lot of girls who also have played softball. And unfortunately, in the high schools, that we are told to bring our own equipment because there's not enough funding for softball. And unlike what most people are knowledgeable about, is that softball is a very expensive sport, and unfortunately, because of that, certain students and female athletes feel discouraged by it because of their income. And fortunately enough for me, I was able to afford it, but other students can't. And I feel like it's really unfair to limit people to not be able to play because of their income and status, because we are just handed two bats when we walk into the sport, and we're just told, like, if you expect to be on the team, you should bring your own equipment. And it's really unfortunate that certain people feel discouraged by that and have to leave. And besides that, I also feel as though the Foreign Language Department was very undervalued because I took French I as a sophomore, and sadly, I am also Puerto Rican in Arabic. And I take it because my mother speaks French, and I don't have the knowledge to speak French, and I was hoping to take it. And when I heard I was, it was being cut, I felt very, how do I say? Cheated out of it, because I would think as a high schooler, I should be able to have input of what I should learn and what should be taught throughout the school, and I think it should be funded more because I took French I with Gilbert, and I could say I learned a lot from it, but I think I, other students, including myself, and hopefully other students who come to Chelsea High will feel very supported in the Foreign Language Department and hopefully softball when funding does, or hopefully comes there. But thank you for taking the time.
Hi, my name is Rachel Whitney. I live in Chelsea, and I'm one of the school counselors at the high school, and I'm here to talk to you about the school guidance department. And we have a quick little pamphlet that we're going to hand out to you guys, because we're not going to go through everything right now, if that's okay? So I just wanted to break down a little bit more in depth about, with the caseload of around two to two-hundred-and-fifty students, the services that, that we are giving all of the students. So we broke this down into direct service and indirect services. So for direct student services, we have instruction where we're teaching groups and class school guidance lessons to our students throughout their four years at Chelsea High School. We meet with all of our students, and we come up with academic plans, including scheduling and how to increase the rigor of their classes and having them be on track for graduation, and helping them think about post-secondary planning. We also do intensive counseling with all of our students for social, emotional needs. We then will refer within the school, if necessary, to social work or to different out-of-district services, if students need access for referrals in the community. We also, in terms of more indirect services, we do a lot of consultation with other staff members in the building. We help advocate for students, we help communicate with families, bring families in, and we also bring in a lot of post-secondary colleges and job training programs to meet the students and to help recruit them, and we also help families when they need referrals in the community. And then we also keep records of every student to make sure that they're on track for graduation, and we help come up with plans if things get in the way. There's a bunch of other things I'm not going to read through on here, but we have a couple more pages of additional responsibilities as well, and thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Nina Davidson. I'm a school counselor in the Bridge Academy at the high school. And as Joseph Terrell said earlier, in the Bridge Academy, which is the program for our newcomers, it's, my caseload right now, as of yesterday, was two-hundred-and-seventeen students. I've had a few students drop out, and then if you go to one of the last pages, I've enrolled seventy-five new students since August 21st of this year. Each enrollment takes about at least an hour, an hour and a half with the family. So given these needs, it's really, I can speak especially to the Bridge Academy, but I also worked in mainstream in the 2016, 2017 school year. The needs are really high. You can see that some of the mainstream counselors have caseloads of upwards of two-fifty, and the amount of students on, that are referred to special education or have active IEPs is up to forty, and school counselors are expected and hoped to attend every single IEP meeting. That's an annual or reconvene or an initial. And then also, we are in charge of the 504 plans, and we manage and implement that by ourselves. So given all of these, like, really high needs in our population for our students that are also either unaccompanied youth or unmeccanivento, we just find it really hard to provide all of the wraparound supports to our students, just like Joseph was mentioning. So even if students do know us or come to seek us out, they often wait outside our offices, or they have to come down, or we're in crises and we have to come back to them later. So we just wanted to give you a little snapshot of what it's like.
Hi, everyone. I'm Becca Schmepperger. I'm one of the school counselors in the high school as well, and just piggybacking off of what Nina and Rachel said... And just piggybacking off of, um, what Nina and Rachel said, um, we, our general concern is that, um, students are not getting the level of direct and indirect services that they need, given, um, our large caseloads and the level of student need. Um, and just one thing we wanted to stress is that, uh, school counselors are expected to meet with every student. That's something that's unique about school counselors. It's not as an ad nee- as needed basis. Um, but also the expectation is that we know all of our students all four years of high school. Um, and tier one interventions that we do, um, on the ground play a key role in identifying needs for more targeted tier two and tier three. For example, referring a student to social work, we see all the students, right? So, it comes through us. Um, and we just think it's difficult to focus on preventative measures and prevention, um, in, uh, when we're always involved or frequently involved in crisis interventions, um, and meeting with students as needed. Um, and then as Nina said, um, our colleagues in, in Bridge have enrolled, um, s- many students. Um, you can see the data, um, on the amount of students that they've enrolled. Um, and it, it takes a lot of time and we have a very transient population. So, enrollments are a big part of what we do. We make sure that students feel welcomed at Chelsea High School. And, um, I think it's an important part of our, our job. Um, and so, an idea that we had just to present to all of you is to take into consideration the possibility of adding more counselors, particularly at the high school level, because of the amount of needs, um, and the large caseload sizes. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Rosario and I live here in Chelsea. I'm a senior at the high school. And I'm also here on behalf of the guidance counselors. For me, my freshman year, I had Ms. Davidson, whom I thought I was gonna stay with throughout the four years of high school and build a bond with her. But unfortunately, my sophomore year, I had a different guidance. And my junior year, I had my current guidance and Ms. Ms. Still, Schmidberger, I'm sorry. And I love her, but every time I walk into her office, she's always busy with the student or there's always students outside waiting to talk to her. And I rely on her a lot, not only because I don't talk to my social worker, I don't even know who it is, but because of the fact that, when I moved here, none of my family's had any idea of what applying to college looked like. And the only person I could talk to about, about it was Ms. S. And so, the fact that she's always busy and she can't really take an hour of her day to talk to each student because of how many students she has, is just really sad for us. Um, she's also motivated me and changed me into the person I am right now. Um, really, I used to be immature, let's just say. And because of her, I am the youngest senior in the school. I'm sixteen. And I already have a plan for life. And I'm really grateful, but the fact that she does not have time for all of us is just really sad. And I would like to see more guidance get added to the school. Thank you.
Hi, I'm, I'm Lamilson Tavarez, forty-five Pine Street, Chelsea. Um, I am a student in AP US History, um, which Astra teaches. We're doing this project we service and, um, my group is focusing on the term people of color. Um, so, my group has decided, like this term has became a root word for, or like, a euphemism for colored people, which is today like socially wrong to say colored people. And we are taught to say people of color by a school with a majority of white teachers. Um, I just wanna emphasize that, because we're being taught as like a diverse, like, class of students on how to say what we should say when we're referring to people who aren't white, by white teachers, which is like, I just like think, it's like, it's not right in the terms where we're not being asked what we identify as, as students, every single day in, like, school. We as teenagers, we're changing a lot and like what we identify as should be important, like when we're coming into school. And, um, like, I think that we should be asked like, oh, what do you identify as? Where are you from? Rather than referring to us as people of color or assuming that we are Hispanic, because we live in a very Hispanic community. Whereas like, I understand like if you're assuming like people are Hispanic, because like it is a very largely Hispanic community. But like, for me, like, I am African-American. I, like, prefer, I'd rather be called African-American than a person of color, only because a person of color means everybody who is not white, also meaning a minority. And I don't identify as, I identify as a black African-American. Um, and I also wanted to speak about the guidance counselor situation. I had five guidance counselors in the last four years. Um, I, this year, I had a new guidance counselor and I ended up switching it to a person I actually knew, mainly because, um, I didn't know who my new guidance counselor was. And I thought if I didn't have a relationship with them, it was gonna make my senior year really hard, which, um, was troubling switching them to Khorabaji. But like, I felt like I needed to do that with a person who was in the school. Thank you.
Um, hi, my name is Brittany Fitzgibbon. I leave, I live at one oh nine Olive Avenue in Malden, Mass. Um, I'm a history teacher at the high school and I have a lot of things like I wanna say, but I think, you know, I'm just gonna do the history teacher thing and try to give you some like really concrete evidence of some of the things I see and some of the things that can be improved, um, if money is allocated to them. So, one thing I wanna address is that we desperately need to have more arts and elective teachers. Um, I have a mentor Monday student. I've had him since he was a freshman. He's currently a junior. He has never had the opportunity to take in our class. We have worked very hard every year since freshman year, trying to get him into art club, trying to get him into art classes. But it is impossible, because the classes are very, very full, they're in very high demand. And the schedule is just completely sort of unforgiving, especially for those students who are taking APs or honors classes, are Bridge students who have full-year courses. It, it means that they can't actually explore their full potential and become a well-rounded student. That's not an option. Um, I wanna talk about guidance counselors and I'm just gonna actually speak about an incident today. I had a student come into me during my first period prep. We were trying to talk about how to help him move forward. He was really struggling. This is his junior year. So, I called down to his guidance counselor and she was lovely and listened to sort of like my feelings. And at that point, she was like, I wanna help. I'm, I'm with another student. Can you send him down in ten minutes? Oh, wait, no, I have another student. Send him down in thirty minutes. Send him down in thirty minutes. Guidance counselor was able to squeeze him in. She emailed me later today at around eleven o'clock during her lunch. Um, and this was while she was also meeting with another student. So, today, I know that she met with at least four students. Those are just four students I happen to concretely know about for this one guidance counselor on a, you know, relatively low-key Thursday. Um, I wanna talk about class sizes very briefly. My fourth-period freshman class is currently thirty. Uh, another guidance counselor emailed me yesterday to ask if I can fit another student in the class. And I said, I cannot. I literally do not have the chairs or tables. And I already am having difficulty learning and meeting and making relationships with the thirty students that I have. Um, last year, there was a comment made that our class sizes at Chelsea High School were too small, that they were suburban-level classes. I just happen to think that our students deserve suburban-level classes. They should have them. Um, I would like to see less money being spent on web-based platforms. We have a lot of, if you open up the Chelsea High School sort of teacher homepage, there's about a dozen websites that we're expected to use. And they're great and they do help make, you know, things more efficient, but education is not about efficiency. It's about building relationships and preparing our kids. And I think if you really want true efficiency, if you wanna get the most paying for your buck, put more loving adults into positions to support our students. Um, I also just wanna talk briefly about the health class. Again, some concrete evidence. Last year, an AP student told me that the birth control pill was better than condoms, because it prevents pregnancy and STDs. That is false. That is false information. And that's coming from an incredibly intelligent young woman. We desperately need a health class that actually gives our students the knowledge they need. My time is up? And, yeah, so, thank you for listening.
Uh, hello, my name is Karen Maragaga. I live on three George Street in Chelsea. Um, I wanna talk about the choral department. We are very underfunded. And our own choral teacher, Cole Lundquist, is unable to buy, well, he buys our music, um, through his own salary. Um, we don't get funded for the music that we have. And of course, um, as you've seen before, we make beautiful music, which I also believe helps us grow as a student and, um, as a person as well. Um, having the arts, um, like the art classrooms, they're very small. Um, of course, I've seen them before. Um, I wish that they were bigger as well and more classes like this. The arts are very underfunded at times, which is very, the arts are very important, uh, is what I'm trying, um, to say. And having more funding for them would help students learn and grow and become more well-rounded adults. Um, I'd just like to isolate the, the choir. We, our stands are, half of our stands are broken, some of our chairs, we don't have enough. And the room is starting to become more smaller by the day. Um, having more funding with this would be such a big help, especially with students who are struggling in school, especially with anxiety and stress and everything. I use, uh, choir as a stress reliever, as well as art, so that I don't, um, overwhelm myself with academics. Um, because being a student at Chelsea High and in any place is a very stressful situation, causing more anxiety and more mental problems than ever. So, isolating the, the arts and giving more funding would be a big help. Thank you.
My name is Lozzy Santos and I live at nine thirteen Broadway here in Chelsea. Um, adding on to what Karen said, um, I feel like we should fund more for the arts and music department. We're very underfunded. Um, if you go into the band room, you can see that we've won a lot of first-year places from competition. Yeah, we don't have a trophy case. They're all stuffed into the closet. They're in the corner all dusty and it's like, we don't have that pride of showing it off. We don't have that, oh, look, we won first place. No, they're all in the closet. It's just there. And I feel like, um, the music department should be more valued, especially that we're like the heart of the high school. Like, we go to competition and everything, but we don't have this to like show off, like what we've done and our progress. Also, we don't have anything like other schools, like Color Guard or like the opportunity to go perform at Disney World, like other schools do. Um, I just feel like the music department and, um, the arts department, especially drama, we should be more funded. We should have more of these resources. I play percussion and a bunch of us, we're all cluttered, cluttered in the back of the room and we don't have enough instruments for all of us. We're like, I play the temper, the tambourine on the floor. And it's like, we don't have enough space. We don't have enough instruments for us. Um, we play on buckets, because we don't have the snare drums for our pieces. So, I feel like a bunch of the funding should go towards the arts and music department. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Daniel Alvarado. I live in sixty-nine Sixth Street, down this little hill. Um, I feel like we should fund more for, um, SAT prep classes, 'cause the Chelsea High School average, I believe, is nine hundred, which is really bad, really low. And I had a friend of mine who went to Revere High and transferred to Chelsea, 'cause he moved to Chelsea. And he said he got a thirteen hundred, 'cause they said that at Revere, they prep you, like, you have to do this. They even make a class about SATs. And he got a high score, so he's all set. And Chelsea High, they did something different. Now, we have like SAT prep and I blocks, which I think is a good idea, but it's not a lot. I was put into that in twelfth grade and I was like, I already took my two SATs, so it was too late for me. And that's why I feel like we should fund, 'cause SAT is very important, very important for, um, students. And like, it's the way for some students to get into good colleges as well. Also, about guidance counselors, I feel like we should have more gui- guidance counselors at our school, 'cause guidance counselors should like, 'cause sometimes people get sick, teachers can get sick. And when a guidance counselor is sick in our school, um, let's say for like a week or a day, so many students can't go to them, which their schedule keeps building and building and building up. And I feel like if we had more guidance counselors, um, students can look, can go to others and ask for help. Also, some guidance counselors, all of them, but some are like more busy than others, 'cause I, some students be like, my guidance counselor's not here. Oh, he's not here again. And, uh, some guidance counselors' schedules are weird. They're like seven fifteen and like fifteen and like, and seven fifteen, like seven twenty, seven thirty-five, something like that. And, yeah, we should go, we should fund for these two things. Thank you for having me.
Hello, my name is Leilani Maruskowski. My address is eight six six Huntington Ave in Boston. I'm a community organizer with Green Roots. Um, and I have a couple of comments, um, in regards to, first, I wanna thank you all for hosting the, the budget meeting at our office. And I also have a couple of pieces of feedback, um, of how we can make that process a little bit better. And then I also want to talk about some budget items as well. Um, I think a little bit of clarity on what the expectation is when we're partnering with community organizations on who's doing outreach would be really helpful, um, just to make sure that like, if I know that I have to do the door knocking, I have enough time to go out and do it. Um, and then if we could, um, think about in all of our school, uh, meetings, community meetings, childcare. Um, for particularly the little ones, I know that we want the students to participate. But for kids who are like two, three, one, they're crawling all over their parents and it becomes difficult for their parents to participate. Um, and then formal interpretation. Um, and then I was wondering if we can make that PowerPoint available, so that we can look at those topics again or what those different areas of where the funding could go. I checked on the website today in the budget section and there's, um, the fire is up. But it would be nice to know exactly where our spending has to be categorized into. Um, in terms of where I've seen, uh, some areas of, with the youth that I work with, in terms of what I think some budget, uh, could go into, is financial planning. Um, there's actually, it's really hard as a community organization to get funding for that. Um, and I have seniors that don't know what taxes are, um, and they're eighteen. Um, they don't know how to take out a loan. They don't know how to save, um, their money. So, I think those would be really, really helpful. Um, I also wanna uplift what I heard the guidance counselors say. Um, it's really great to meet you all, 'cause I've actually heard about all of you for the teens that I work with. Um, and our teens need a lot of social support, so if we could really look at investing in that. Um, I know that for some of my teens who are really struggling with some very serious issues, um, it can be a while, um, for them to, to see even their social worker or sometimes they're, they, they feel a crunch when they have to squeeze in their guidance counselor visit and they know that you're making time for them. And they, they're really grateful, but they also feel that pressure too for you. Um, and then also, looking at art, uh, one of the things that we have to also look for is funding for art, uh, because we've heard that our young people aren't getting art in school. So, upcoming events that are happening are as a murals project that we're doing and a customizer kick. So, we're looking for any kind of opportunities to provide art for, um, young people in Chelsea as a way to have a creative outlet for some of the things that they're dealing with. Um, and then I also wanna uplift, uplift the diversity of staff and sup- and not just increasing diversity, but also investing in support for those teachers who may be coming into a space where they are, uh, a minority within their teaching staff. Um, thank you.
Hi, Dana Bromovich, Chel- uh, teacher at Chelsea High, uh, twelve Portis Charles Town. Yep, sorry about that. Uh, there's so many important, critical asks that we heard today from the community. So, to that end, I would just really like to echo Catherine's earlier comment, um, to have a continued, transparent, and collaborative process. Uh, we very much appreciated the community sessions for input. And we just hope that the, as the draft budgets becomes available, we have continued opportunities to have sessions like this, um, to give input on a detailed line item budget, because general budgets are very difficult to decipher. Uh, so, we hope there's more and more opportunities for us to give detailed and informative and thoughtful comments back and that the process will continue. Thank you so much.
Lamilson Tavarez, forty-five Pine Street. Um, I just wanted to talk about the arts really quick. We are forced into I block. And if you don't know what I block is, it essentially is a fifty-minute, um, period of time between first and second period, where, um, as in the past few years, I block was not a thing. I block was just new last year. And, um, the arts was not during I block. It was an actual period. And forcing the arts into I block, it gave us less time. And as Karen said earlier, like the arts is most of like hours, like this, the arts is my outlet. The arts is Karen's outlet. The arts is everybody else's art outlet that is in those classes. And it's mainly, we use those to get out the stress from high school. And it's like, having them in I block is decreasing our, like, amount of time and outlet. And it got to a point where I had to join another choir outside of school that I am paying for to go to twice a week, just so I can let out every emotion that I have inside of me. And that is all. Thank you.
Good evening. Are there any more comments? No? Sure, last call. All right. Uh, that closes public comments. Good evening. Uh, I apologize for my tardiness. I was at parent-teacher conferences at my school. Um, I'm so happy to see so many faces. I'm so happy to see so many faces here. Thank you for those who commented. I'll be sure to read over those comments. Thank you, Rosemary, for covering when I was gone. Should we take a five-minute break? Do we feel like we need school committee members now? No? Great. Yes, okay. Okay, we'll take a one-minute break. Great. All right, team, we are going to get started. I told you it was one minute. Sorry. Thank you to all of those who came to speak at tonight's meeting. Thank you once again. All right, let's get right to the agenda. Number six on the agenda, report of the superintendent of schools.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. First, I would like to thank everyone that came out tonight and our wonderful Kantari. This is why we do the work that we do for our students. So one of my priorities as superintendent is to be in schools, and that is a high priority for me. So as I've been conducting walkthroughs in schools, here are some highlights. And I, I've been doing formal walkthroughs, so, and I haven't covered all the schools yet. I still have three more to go. But just some highlights from each school. So at the Berkowitz, I just want to commend the school community for the universal design for learning. It's evident in the classrooms. Clark Middle School, there is evidence of common planning time in literature that is culturally relevant. And I will say that there's evidence of culturally relevant in all of our schools. At the Brown School, I saw solid grade-five instruction and teacher messaging to students that they love being their teachers. At Chelsea High School, I see students who care and support each other. At Chelsea Opportunity Academy, the instruction is individualized and there's a focus on relationships. We have had several community forums regarding budget conversations. And our last conversation was this last week at Green Roots. And I agree, we do have areas to improve on in these areas, in how we do our community conversations. So thank you so much, our Green Roots partner, for that feedback. Also, we have one more community conversation regarding our budget at the Collaborative. We would, we thought we would try something new and do a community conversation in the middle of the day. And that will be hosted at the Collaborative on February 10th at 10:00 a.m. So we're hoping to reach a different group of community, a different constituents from our community. And also, please don't forget to come out and I always, we have to have well-rounded students. And so, please come out and support our Chelsea Public School Athletics teams. Our CH Boys and Girls Basketball Teams are doing well. The games are exciting. And so, please come out and watch. And that ends my report. We can move on to student achievement with our Assistant Superintendent Sarah Kent.
Good evening. This month, we actually have quite a few indicators and data points for you in that the semester, first semester has ended, and we're moving on to semester two. So we will have both monthly and quarterly updates, as well as our usual mobility rates. If you could start on page three, looking at attendance, you'll see that grades two through eight are above our goal of ninety-five percent year-to-date, and grade one is extremely close. We are continuing to work. K and pre-K needs a little bit of work, and we're continuing to work at the high school as well. I will say that right now, we're at ninety-three point three percent year-to-date, which is a whole half a percentage point higher than we were last year at this time. So hopefully, flu season will stay away and we'll continue to do well. We also, you may have seen, we have posted a position for a second attendance officer, which will be helping with tracking kids down and having them come to school. On page four, you'll see the quarter grades for grades, kids in grade four. And as you can see, in reading, writing, math, and science, we have a ways to go. I did look at where we were compared to last year. It was very equivalent. You can see in the left-hand columns of the table where we landed at the end of the year. So I'm hoping and expecting that to improve. On page five, similarly with grade-eight students, you can see the percentage of students receiving a C or better in ELA writing, math, and science. And again, it is about equivalent to where we were last year. And we are working on improving those scores along the way. If you could then turn, sorry, to page six. We have had twelve students withdraw in the month of January. And you can see in the table in the middle of the page for indicator eight that we do have four more students that have dropped out this year than last year. We have fifty-four this year, and we had fifty last year. But you also need to notice that we have about a hundred more students this year as well. Down below, you can see that we are still struggling with our Ls is the sub-population. Our regular ed students are doing well with only a one point two-six dropout rate, which we're pretty proud of. But we're continuing to work with the bridge and the L students. On page seven, you can see the details. Mostly, our dropouts were spread throughout grade nine through twelve, but most were in grade eleven this month. And you can see that, we know that one of those twelve students went to an adult education program, and the others are unknown, which means that we were unable to have a conversation with them once they left school. If you could turn to page nine and see our mobility. This month, we had a hundred and thirty-five children either move in or out for a net loss of five. It was pretty even at the elementary. We lost a few at the ELC and high school and gained some at the middle school. At this point in the year, we have fourteen point four percent mobility, which is quite high. And we've had nine hundred students either move in or out. On page ten, it's our last data point, are our grades for grades nine and ten at the high school. This is something that we've been tracking for a long time. You'll be able to see that in grade nine, we have moved from twenty-seven percent of students having failed one or more grades up to thirty-nine. And similarly, in grade ten, it increased a bit as well. This is why we track this, is so that when something happens, you know, when data moves in a direction, we can respond. And we have, at the high school, had a change in leadership, and we've had a little bit of a bumpy few months. We have a plan on this. We've talked about this already. We also have some support in that we've hired Dr. Blake Canty, who's doing some coaching for the leadership team there. So we, this is why we do this, is so that we know we still have half a year to work hard and change these data points. Are there any questions? I know it's a lot. I talked fast and there's a lot of data.
Mr. Wilson?
You know roughly percentage-wise in either category, in or out? Pick them down for us.
Sure. Yeah, if you look at the table on page nine, the farthest column to the right, at the bar bottom, you can see that five hundred and forty-three students have moved in and three hundred and fifty-seven students have moved out. I just added those two numbers to get nine hundred.
All right, thank you.
Great question.
Any more questions, team?
Great. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next up is the personnel update on enclosure B.
I would like to commend our personnel update to, for the record.
Do we have any questions on enclosure B? All right, moving on, enrollment report, enclosure C.
I would like to commend the enrollment report for the record.
All right, team, any questions for enclosure C? No? Awesome, moving right along to the committee reports.
Sub, of the subcommittee meeting minutes, and command them to the report.
Do we have a second? Next up, unfinished business.
We have a student rep.
Oh, my apologies. Hi, go right ahead.
So currently, there are a lot of things happening at the high school, but I think one of the most important things is that a lot of our seniors are hearing back from colleges they've applied to. I know personally, some students have heard back from Salem State, UMass Boston, UMass Lowell, Curry, WPI, Lee Soul Bay State, and Reggie's. I think one student was even awarded over seven thousand dollars per year scholarship at Bradley University, which is really amazing to hear because he was one of my friends. And then also, currently, the drama department is preparing for their spring musical Avenue Q, which is kind of like a comedy with puppets, which is really something I'm looking forward to. Also, in the arts, our Kantari that performed here tonight was invited to perform at the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior celebration that was over at the Clark on the twentieth. Also, at that event was our Interact Club over at the high school. They were really helpful because they helped from serving food, to feeding the guests, to clean up after the event was over. They also hail, I'm sorry, they also hold an annual essay competition, and a junior at Chelsea High School represented us. Amy Jimenez, she was here tonight. She spoke on the public section. In regards to the Chelsea High School Athletics, the girls indoor track team won the CAC League Me undefeated season, so very proud of them. Also, the girls on the basketball team had the opportunity to fundraise money with the Dream Big Foundation. They went to the Celtics game last night, and they sold raffle tickets. Basically, what the foundation does is that half of the proceeds that they made through the, so through selling these raffle tickets goes to supporting disadvantaged female student athletes who can't afford equipment for whatever sport it is, whether it be from softball to basketball. And the other half went to the winner of the raffle, so that would be fun for them. And then with prom right around the corner, the senior class officers have been working really hard to fundraise money to make sure it's a special night for everyone who attends. And some other fundraisers include selling T-shirts, and also we, they do have a fundraiser coming up next week where they're going to cater a brunch to students, any students who want to come through. And then lastly, also similar to how students are voicing their concerns, parents also voice their concerns over the graduation date from Sunday afternoon to a Monday night. And they just have expressed to administration and their own students or sons and daughters that they were upset about the lack of communication and decision-making, and they're just looking forward to more communication in the future and possibly returning to a Sunday afternoon schedule. But with that said, I think we should be proud of our hard-working students and our educators over at the high school.
Thank you so much for that update. I'm sure Dr. Abada and I can get back to you in regards to graduation date. But it's so fun to hear everything that's going on. Remind me your name?
My name is Jasmine Droual.
Jasmine, nice to meet you. Moving right along, unfinished business, none. So now we are getting into new business. Consideration and action to accept twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars in grant funding for the five district partnership, including two hundred thousand dollars from the BAR Foundation and two thousand five hundred dollars from the Nellie May Foundation. Explanation: Recently, the five district partnership received two hundred thousand dollars grant award from the BAR Foundation to support a strategic planning process aimed at strengthening school leadership. Per BAR Foundation direction, a portion of the grant funds are to be distributed directly to five DP partners for travel stipends and substitutes, including Malden, thirteen thousand three hundred dollars, Revere, thirteen thousand three hundred dollars, and Winthrop, nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Salem State University, which runs an existing leadership program for educators seeking CAGS degrees, is a fifth partner in the effort, and Salem State will receive fifty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars to conduct research and provide consultant services for this effort. Chelsea will retain sixteen thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars for its expenses, such as cost of travel, consulting support, substitute stipends, professional development, and other expenses in support of the program. In addition, the five DP received two thousand five hundred dollars from the Nellie May Education Foundation to support the educator showcase. Funds will be used to provide coaching for presenters and/or to professionally videotape the event. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Three Seventy-Eight, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
Consideration and action to accept twenty-two thousand five hundred in grant funding for the five district partnership, including two hundred thousand from the BAR Foundation and two thousand five hundred from the Nellie May Foundation. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
I'm going to do the roll call again. Sure. Consideration and action to accept two hundred and two thousand five hundred in grant funding for the five district partnership, including two hundred thousand from the BAR Foundation and two thousand five hundred from the Nellie May Foundation. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Henriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago? Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent. The motion carries.
All right, next one. Consideration and action to accept a donation of up to thirteen thousand dollars value including but not limited to four hundred and eighty twenty-five dollar gift cards, a Chromebook and movie gift cards from the Lynch Foundation to be provided to students with perfect attendance at the upcoming Acceleration Academy. Explanation: The Lynch Foundation has generously donated a number of items to acknowledge students who have perfect attendance at the upcoming Acceleration Academy, which will take place for five days over February break and also April break. The donation includes four hundred and eighty twenty-five dollar gift cards, The donation includes four hundred and eighty twenty-five dollar Target gift cards, one per student enrolled in the program, and a Chromebook, a wireless speaker, and additional gift cards to be awarded at random to students with perfect attendance. The total estimated value of the donation is as much as thirteen thousand dollars. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven A, provides for the acceptance of gifts purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept a donation of up to thirteen thousand dollars value, including but not limited to four hundred and eighty twenty-five dollar gift cards, a Chromebook, and a movie gift cards from the Lynch Foundation to be provided to students with perfect attendance at the February Acceleration Academy. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Great, consideration and action to accept a donation of three hundred pairs MRC safety glasses worth an estimated value of four hundred and fifty dollars from the Museum of Science. Explanation: The Museum of Science has generously donated three hundred pairs of M, oh, I'm sorry, MCR safety glasses worth an estimated value of four hundred and fifty dollars to Chelsea Public Schools. Upon acceptance of the school committee, the safety glasses will be provided to the three middle schools to be used as needed in science classes. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven A, provides for the acceptance of gifts purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept a donation of three hundred pairs of MCR safety glasses worth an estimated value of four hundred and fifty dollars from the Museum of Science. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars in transitional relief for impact of change in low-income measure. Funding to move funds from district administration, technology services, and benefits and payroll to facilities management. Explanation: In October two thousand nineteen, the school committee authorized the acceptance and appropriation of three hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars in transitional relief for impact of change in low-income measure funding. Subsequent to this action, staff learned that in the current fiscal year, the pothole funds would not count toward the net school spending for the year. This is a change in how DESI is characterizing the funds as compared to last fiscal year. Expenditure, expenditures that are not NSS include spending on the intergenerational literacy program, transportation costs, leases more than three years in length, and other expenses that do not directly support school students. Staff recommend that the school committee authorize a budget transfer in the pothole funds to purpose, purposes that are not NSS eligible. Specifically, that the funds be added to funding set aside for the relocation of the ILP and Chelsea Opportunity Academy. As noted, ILP expenses are not NSS eligible and any physical improvements to leased space made on behalf of the COA that exceeds one hundred and fifty thousand dollars is automatically not NSS as well. Roll call?
Consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-one in transitional relief for impact of change in low-income measure. Funding to move funds from district administration, technology services, and benefits and payrolls to facilities management. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Consideration and action to accept the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year academic calendar. Explanation: The proposed calendar has been vetted by Central Office School Administrator CTU in the Policies and Procedures Subcommittee. School calendars must be approved by school committee. Roll call? Or is it a motion? Do I have a motion to accept the academic calendar?
I make a motion to accept the proposed calendar for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, motion carries. Consideration and action to accept a proposed naming of school facilities policy. Explanation: Chelsea Public Schools currently does not have a policy for the naming of school buildings and facilities. The proposed policy was drafted by the law office after review of local policies and law. To have a motion to accept the policy naming of school buildings. I think. A roll call, okay, roll call.
Consideration and action to accept the proposed naming of school facilities, facilities policy. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Thank you. The last, or second to last item, communications. You will find in enclosure M, the Boston Museum of Science thank you letter. In enclosure N, you will find the Lynch Foundation thank you letter. Any announcements or comments? Mr. Wilson?
Alright, it is Black History Month, so there's a lot of events going on in the city. And the Chelsea Black Community Organization, we just had our first event here at the library, I mean, at City Hall Tuesday night. Great art event. The next event that we have coming up for the seventeenth, February, is gonna be a cook-off community dinner. It's gonna be held at the La Luz de Cristo Iglesias Church at seven thirty-eight Broadway in Chelsea. The next event we have will be the twentieth, which is the best of the best event here for Black History Month, which will be at the Williams School. And it's Thursday, February twentieth at five o'clock. It's our big Black History Month celebration. That's when we let our trailblazers be known and celebrate our trailblazers here in our community. Also, we have an event at the, on February twenty-seventh, Thursday from twelve to three PM. Maya Angelou, Power of Music, at the Charleston Senior Center. And the other event that we have, which, you know, if you've got some talent, you want to be in a fashion show, you can sing, you can dance, whatever. February twenty-eighth is a Friday event at the Clark School from six PM to eight PM. It's the Evening of Performance Arts. And the last event that I have, that I really want to have a lot of us be there, is at the Shore Collaborative. They have an open house Thursday, February twenty-seventh from three-thirty till seven PM. So it's at one-twenty-one Crescent Ave, not too far for some people, place of work down the street. So, uh, hope to see you guys there. It's a great event, great facility, and it's an honor to be there, be a part of the team there.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Mariana, so she go forward to us. Address, date, and time? Why haven't you received?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carlisle?
We all got an email that we, from the Lynn Technical School, that how proud they are of the way our girls' basketball were playing and representing the city of Chelsea and the students at Chelsea High. And I want to thank the girls' basketball team for being part of Chelsea and thank you for projecting what you are and where you live in Chelsea. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlisle. Any other comments? Ms. Santiago?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank superintendent and the cabinet for all their work on the recent community budget conversations. It's been really good to witness that process with, you know, folks in the community. The most recent one at Green Roots where, you know, the Eagle Youth were very much participating in that conversation with us, the same as high school students, the one we had prior to that at the high school. And I just wanted to say that, you know, there is, just echoing the superintendent, that there's another one at the Collaborative, you know, scheduled. And I think this might be the seventh, sixth or seventh community conversation at this point. I'm, might be a little bit off, somewhere around there. But needless to say that, you know, I would just say that I'm open to hearing feedback as well and whatever we can communicate to be able to make sure that, you know, parents and community folks, educators, feel heard. And if there's anything else that we can do to help spread the word and, you know, in, in terms of outreach as well, you know, just to, to let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago.
School committee, had the opportunity to work with Mrs. Kent and the science people at the Burke Complex. And I will be going to the complex next week for three days and then on the twenty-fourth to present Louis Latimer to the children. And we'll serve about five hundred kids while we're there that week.
That's awesome, thank you. That is it. Alright, meeting adjourned.